Good evening. Welcome to the August 13, 2018, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Charlotte P. will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner?
I shall pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for this opportunity to gather and have a voice in our family. Thank you for our many blessings and for this mercy and grace and great goodness.
Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P. Hettis Reed.
Here.
Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a call.
Thank you, Gail. This time, we need to read and approve the minutes of our June 11 meeting. I'll call Vice Chair Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those meetings are here before me and reviewed, and I do approve those. And for a second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of our June 11. Who seconded that? Thank you, Craig. All those in favor of the motion to approve those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir.
Thank you. Under new business, six A items that are submitted for final plat approval. Item 17-2081, Gurwick subdivision, two lots on five-plus acres, zone RL located off South Greenwood Road. Jacob and Will Gurwick are the applicants. This includes a waiver to our fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, commission members. Hope everybody's doing well today. The Planning Commission granted a waiver for the fire hydrant requirements back in September of 2017 for this property. The applicant is splitting the property into two tracks, as you can see on your -- there's a copy on your iPad, as well as on the screen behind me. This item was originally going to be on the agenda before even the July 23 meeting. We've been kind of going back and forth with the applicant on this. But the last time, on July 23, it was removed due to some questions with the septic soils. Those issues have been addressed. It really had to do with some of the septic soils that were identified on track number two toward the road. They had to take a little bit out due to the setback from the roads right away. But those issues have been addressed. This plat is in good order. They've addressed all of our comments, so we'd recommend approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17-2081 for Gurwick subdivision. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 682-18-2075, Victor Estrella, two lots on 2.98 acres, zone RL located along Christiana Road, which is Highway 269. Victor Estrella is the applicant. This includes a waiver to the off-site soil requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This property will look familiar. This also was on the July 23, 2018, Planning Commission meeting. This was deferred at that meeting due to several questions regarding the plat. As you can see on the plat -- Mike, could you zoom in on that just a little bit on the -- down in that area? Okay, thanks. I'm going to zoom in just a little bit here. There were some questions about the existing septic soils and what SSD systems went with which properties. After that meeting, I've had discussions with the applicant's design engineer regarding this. Several additions and annotations have been made to this. You can see that the existing garage, which is located on Lot 2, is to be removed. Originally, that wasn't the case, but they are planning to remove that. So that would take away one of the issues that we had with this. If you recall, that they were going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals before this was recorded. With that being removed, that won't be the case. All of the other septic areas, there's no off-site soils in the sense that any of those soil areas are actually for adjacent lots. They all actually serve the lots that they're on. The reason for the off-site soil, again, if you recall, is that easement -- if you could, Mike, could you bring that -- sorry, the plan back up. The tight line easement for Lot 2, as you can see on there, that was the reason for that, to have that drain off. But the only other issue with this, and I've discussed this with the design engineer as well, for the proposed Lot 1, which is the one closest to the road, that area -- and, Mike, if I say something that's not quite right, let me know. That area down in there kind of is a bowl when you look at the topography. So we've asked the design engineer to just set a minimum pad elevation on Lot 1. The other lot should be fine. The other issue, if you recall, had to do with the driveway access. They are still proposing one driveway for Lot 1, which would be on the westernmost side of the property, with the existing driveway to access the remaining acreage in the back, as well as the proposed Lot 2. So there's not three driveways. There would be two total, but one driveway would serve two lots. With those changes, we feel that this plat is in good order, so we'd recommend approval, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present as well.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff?
Chair, hearing no questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second and a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-2075 for Victor Estrella. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. At this time, I need a motion to suspend the rules to add an item under the final plat approval area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The item number is 18-2004. Mike Hollingshead property, lots 1 and 2. This is formerly the Johnny Akins property. Two lots on 9.14 acres, zoned RM, located off Swiss Air Drive. Johnny Akins is the applicant. Plat includes waiver request for a lot of less than five acres on a private easement and an access easement of less than 50 feet. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This particular property was actually considered at the Planning Commission back in January of this year. Again, it was known as the Johnny Akins plat at that time, so the ownership's changed, name's changed, which, as far as the substance of the plat, nothing has changed as far as that's concerned. The reason this is being brought back before you tonight is it's gone over its six-month approval. It's lapsed, so they're just asking for a reapproval. Again, nothing has changed on this, with the exception of the ownership, and I mean, that's not something we normally would bring back before you, anyway. But this plat's in good order. We'd recommend approval.
Chairman, I make recommendation to be approved by this committee with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-2004 for Mike Hollingshead. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A, these are items that are scheduled for public hearings. They are all zoning requests, rezoning requests. Item 6B1, 18-A015, Solomon and Harmony Yazagaree. Did I say that kind of right? Thank you. The location is 848 Baker Road. Commissioner District is 11. County Commissioner is Rhonda Allen. Site of the site is approximately six acres. Tax map 491. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is institutional. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As you stated, this property is located at 848 Baker Road. The applicant is planning to rezone the property in order to establish a nursing home or similar type facility. There's not a concept plan that's been included with your agenda materials, nor has a business plan been presented to staff. Institutional zoning is a limited zone as far as allowable uses are concerned. It would allow this type of use, nursing home or other healthcare-related use, but it would only do so by special exception. So that means even if the rezoning is approved, any use in that category would still have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. Approximately half this property is impacted by the FEMA 100-year floodplain, most of that being the regulatory floodway. There's really not a whole lot you can do or develop with floodway property. So this will limit the amount of developable area on the property. This property is adjacent to the town of Smyrna. The adjacent property right to the west is zoned I-2, which is an industrial-type zone, which is within the town of Smyrna. But as you can see, it's actually separated, the property's separated by Stewart Creek, and most of the buildings and everything are really on the western part of that other property. There is an existing single-family residence on the property. Should this property be rezoned, the house would become a legally established, nonconforming use or grandfathered use, which would be regulated by Chapter 13 of our zoning ordinance. As long as the residential use of the property continues and is not discontinued for a period of greater than 30 months, the use can continue even if the property changes hands and ownership. However, if that use is discontinued for longer than 30 months, or if the property is redeveloped, that nonconforming status would be lost. The existing house on the property has driveway access, both to Baker Road and Stewart Valley Drive. Of course, any new development on this property would have to adhere to our current standards regarding access and parking. Access would have to be something we would reevaluate in the site plan review process should this application be approved. Institutional zone properties are also required to install a Type 1 buffer adjacent to any RM-zoned properties. They are not required to install any buffers adjacent to industrially zoned properties, but most of that western portion of the property would remain undisturbed as it's in the floodway, anyway. But just to let you know about that. And of course, our performance standards would apply to this as well. Staff didn't make a recommendation one way or the other on this. We have mixed feelings on this. The property is immediately adjacent to industrially zoned property, as we discussed, but it is separated by the creek. Properties in immediate vicinity on the other part, other sides of this property are all zoned RM. Actually, it's part of a, or backs up to an existing subdivision. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present, and I'm sure they'd like to make some comments as well.
Any questions for staff at this time?
I read this, and I heard you explain it, but I'm going to ask a question again. The -- that means that if they do not live in the residence for a time period greater than 30 months, it can no longer be a residence?
If it's, if the use is discontinued, if they were to rent it out, you know, if they didn't live there themselves but rented it out to somebody, that would still be residential use. But if the use itself was discontinued, let's say the meter was cut off, nobody lived in it for 30 months, then at that point, if it's rezoned, then yes, that use, the nonconforming grandfathered use, would discontinue at that time.
Doug, could you zoom out a little bit so I can get my bearings on exactly where that is in relationship to major roads and the city?
Apologies, the computer is a little slow tonight. But this is I-24 Baker Road where it crosses, and I'll zoom out a little bit more. 102 Lee Victory Parkway is right here. Troton is right here. This is the Shell Station, I think, down here. Let's see, what else? The gray area is Smyrna Town Limits. So this is Ammerville Road down here in the industrial area to the south of 24, Lee Victory to the north.
So access to this property is going to be from the south, from around Florence Road, is that correct? And from the north?
Baker, Baker Road. Baker, this is Baker.
That's Baker Road, but where does Baker Road go to the next major intersection? Is that Florence?
Okay, it can go over to Old Nashville or down to One Mile when it crosses 24. This is One Mile Lane right here, and you can go back up to Ammerville and then, or continue down Baker to the south.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any telephone calls, Doug?
Yes, sir. We've received several calls about this, some informational, others that were opposed to the request.
Any other questions at this time? At this time, we'll, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 18-A015. The applicant is present. Would you please come forward? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Solomon Yazagaree, 848 Baker Road, Smyrna.
Harmony Yazagaree, 350.
Thank you. If you would, tell us a little bit about what you have in mind.
We've lived on the property for over 13 years now, our family. Ever since moving in, we've had numerous requests by realtors and developers to build churches, wedding chapels, nursing homes, retirement facilities over the years, and we wanted to manage this process so that the neighbors that we've grown very fond of, and we have a great relationship with our immediate neighbors, we wanted to make sure that whatever was done with this property after we left would be done in a way that we best, we thought would be for the area. We were, did not want this to be something that we sold at some point. Someone might turn it, try to get it rezoned, commercial general put whatever, building station, tattoo parlor, or whatever you would, would not want there because of how we feel about our neighbors. So our goal was to try to transition this into something that would be best used for our neighbors. We even thought about a church, but we thought, to be honest, that's a lot of traffic twice a week for the area. So something like a nursing or retirement home would be what we consider to be light traffic and quiet, who would fit in with the neighborhood in the area. And we've talked to all of our neighbors who we've, you know, grown very close to, and none of them had any issues with it and supported us. Do you have anything to say, honey?
Yeah, also, since it's a corner lot, you have two entrances on Baker Road and another entrance on Stewart Valley. So it wouldn't only be entering or exiting on one area. We've also considered that with the proposed idea of a possible exit off of I-24 on Baker Road down the road one day, should it be that, we were concerned that anything that could come in would change the face of the neighborhood. We wanted to be in control of who would be buying the property and what the property would be used for. We wanted to match the neighborhood. We've lived there a long time, and we want something quiet, something that would not disturb residential area around that. And seeing as that, we've had so many offers commercially, even when it has not been on the market, we know that it's something that potentially one day, as these changes come around, it could go to somebody who would just flip it if we just sold it to whoever without asking for rezoning and having it restricted to, you know, something that was like a nursing home or retirement, something that would blend with the community. That's very important to us. We don't want it to be something that would be disruptive to our neighbors. Having said that, too, we don't have a particular buyer already. We wanted to do this on the front end before any buyer would come in, so that those restrictions would already be in place.
And we also did not want to have it subdivided for multiple residential uses either because of the amount of roadway access that we needed for that, too, the existing access. I'm not a planner, but seemed like it'd be possibly adequate for that kind of use that we planned.
Exactly.
Questions for the applicants?
I am the county commissioner for that area, and I've received a lot of contact regarding this request. I do have several questions for you. Did you, you said you've spoken to neighbors, but did you hold any kind of a neighborhood meeting? Because a lot of the neighbors that I've spoken to didn't have information from you and hadn't talked to you.
We spoke to the neighbors that, whose property touched our property and across the street from us. We did not hold a huge neighborhood meeting, and when the sign was put up from there, we've not had anybody contact us. So the only thing I was made aware of two days ago, or three days ago, was a post on hip Smyrna that I was alerted to, but I've not had anybody contact us directly with any questions, and we have spoken to our immediate neighbors.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So on the rezoning, on your part, it's really speculative rezoning in that you don't plan on owning and operating a facility yourselves. You plan on getting the rezoning and then selling it?
Correct.
Have you had any conversations with the town of Smyrna about access to sewer? Because I've met with Kevin Riggsby, who's the town planner, and he told me that the public sewer is not available to this property. So have you given that any thought or had any conversations about that?
We haven't spoken to the town, and we are aware that sewer is not available there.
Whoever we would sell it to, our understanding, I might be wrong, would develop it, and they would contact the necessary people that they would need to once the property was sold.
So at this point, you don't have a concept plan or any engineering, nothing to address, either drainage with half of it being in the floodplain, or anything to address traffic?
As far as the floodplain is concerned, when we had that really bad flood years ago, or when, yeah, 2010, our property sits very high, and then it goes down towards on Stewart's Creek. It goes down. Our property on the top part is very flat, and it also sits at the Baker Road part. It sits considerably above the creek. So the top part, where there would be possibly a building put on, never gets water or gets soggy or anything. Down by the creek, you have to go down, and then there's like a lower area, you have to go down some more steps. That area did get water in it, but it's not an area that you would build on. It's just either side of the creek.
But I had, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants this time? Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
830 Baker Road. David Rados.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Rados. I live at 830 Baker Road, and until I got my letter the other day, I had no idea that this was going on, so I hadn't been contacted by anybody. My biggest concern has always been, I've lived in my address since 1989, and I've seen the traffic on Baker Road increase at a dramatic rate. There's hardly any speed limit signs, supposed to be 40 miles an hour. You might find one or two signs. I called the road commission a few years ago and asked for most signs. We have no money in our budget. But anyhow, I see kids on four-wheelers riding around, no helmets, racing down the street, and as soon as they come off of the curve and go to the straight, the straightway towards Old Nashville Highway, that's a drag strip. And I've pleaded for state police to position a few vehicles out there to be able to catch, catch some speeders. But what's going to happen to Baker Road? Is it going to still remain a two-way, two-lane highway with, with an institution being built on the corner? That's my biggest concern. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, I have a question, and maybe it's just because it's a Monday. I'm not quite understanding why we're going for an industrial zoning, and in particular, the discussion is a retirement center or a nursing home, when that's not part of a IN approved?
Well, IN is institutional. We have two industrial zones, light and heavy industrial, LI and HI. IN, it can be confusing, but IN is institutional, so that's what they're asking for.
So why does it have to go to BZA, then?
For a special exception, for the specific use. There are certain uses that are identified in the zoning ordinance that can be by right. There are several in the institutional zone that could be done by right, but there are several that also require special exception, and the nursing home or medical-type health care facility, I think is what the term is, that we use in the ordinance, would be one of those.
Doug, why would the city of Smyrna come up and annex all the way to this property and stop and not go to Baker Road? Is that residential that they have annexed?
Well, the area that's right up against this property is actually, it's industrially zoned in the town of Smyrna. Yes, sir. It's, and my guess is they stopped right there because that was the limits of the property, and that's where the creek was. So anything beyond the creek, developed as a residential subdivision.
All right, Doug, I guess to your best knowledge, with the limited amount of information we have, how much of this site is really buildable? How big of a pad could we put on this? The fact that the creek is right there, and we don't have sewer, so you got to find soils that perk. So we don't know how, if this would even hold, any, we don't know what size building this would hold, right?
I measured from about the top of bank to the right-of-way at Baker Road and then the right-of-way at Stewart Valley Drive, about two and a quarter to two and a half acres. The rest of it is in floodplain, Stewart's Creek, power line easements. It's, so substantial amount is taken up by those, those easements and challenges.
Anything is going to be fairly small?
Yes, sir, I would think so. You know, of course, the size of any kind of facility would be dictated in part by the amount of usable soil that's on the property. That would go with any use, you know, even if they wanted to subdivide it for residential purposes, you know, being six acres in size or so, even though they could zone it, or I'm sorry, they could subdivide it in theory into 15,000-square-foot lots, if there's not enough soil for that, that's certainly not going to work. You also have to keep into, take into account as well that not only are you, I mean, a good chunk of the site wouldn't be usable just due to the fact of environmental constraints, but you also have to take into account, you know, the parking area, having to set aside the area for the soils, if there's enough there to do what they want to do, detention, you know, stormwater detention, quality and quantity, as well as your screening, buffering, and everything, which for, for a Type 1 buffer isn't excessive, I wouldn't think, but even on a smaller property like that, any little bit is going to eat into whatever developable area that you have when you already have those other constraints.
Best guess, could you put a gas station on this? Probably not, right?
A lot of it depends on how big of a gas station you're talking about. You know, most gas stations, you're talking gas station convenience markets. Now, if they were to get this zoning on the property, that wouldn't even be allowed in the zone, anyway. Right? You're just speculating, right?
I'm just trying to put size, yeah, trying to put a size of a commercial building.
Yeah.
Couldn't put a Dollar General. There's not, wouldn't be enough parking.
Probably not, yes, sir. And generally, those, the ones that we've looked at have been, what, about nine, 10,000 square feet? And then, like you said, all the associated parking along with it, that would require a zone that would require additional screening, probably a Type 2 buffer, which is thicker, which eats in a little bit more to the developable area that you have.
Well, I mean, I applaud the, the fact that the applicant is trying to really specialize the use into something that is less disturbing to the neighborhood, such as a nursing home or care facility. I applaud that idea and that vision. I'm just concerned that there's not enough usable land for such an undertaking. I'm just concerned that there's not enough usable land for such an undertaking, but I don't know. I'm just not sure what, how big of an industrial yield you could get off of this.
Being institutional yield, yeah.
Doug, would staff have less heartburn if there was a community meeting session?
I don't necessarily know if that would change my opinion one way or the other about it, quite frankly. I mean, if that's what the commission wants to do, I think that's fine, but, you know, obviously, staff would make themselves available for any kind of a meeting like that. But, I mean, the issues, there are certain issues that are going to be on this property regardless of a community meeting or not.
Doug, is this not just a little bit different way that we do things, that we look at what they can have? Like Mike says, they may come up with just have, be able to have a two-bed nursing home, it's, could probably, well, they could slip a service station or something there, so we're looking, we don't, we don't know what's going on.
Right. Well, and I won't say that this is a general rule, we don't see all applications, we do see some applications that come in that don't have concept plans and things, a lot of them are, some of them are speculative. I think those applications that have more information on the front end tend to fare better, you know, not that that's like a written rule anywhere, but it makes staff's job a little more difficult when we just don't have a whole lot to go by. And I know it makes the commissioner's job a little more difficult too, when there's just not a lot of detail to go by as well. But, I mean, and, you know, to be fair to the applicant, you know, they're not really at a point right now where they're ready to try to sell it to somebody, so they're trying to get the zoning in place before actually, you know, having discussions with potential developers to actually buy the property. So, they may not be at that point yet. So, they're just trying to get the zoning in place prior to that, but, you know, there's something to be said about, at the same time, about having a better idea, like you were just saying, you know, how much soil capacity really is on the property? If you're not going to be able to have sewer, excuse me, to the property, how much septic soil would you need for a five-bed facility, ten-bed facility, fifteen, twenty, I mean, you name the number of beds? You know, if they have the information, that information, that might give them a better idea, okay, we need X amount of developable property to have something that would support the soil that we've got on here, the soil that would support that. So, with that, that might be something that would be good to know on the front end before moving forward with a zoning request.
Would a concept plan show that?
Concept plan might kind of generally show where the soils area is located. It may not, it'd show building locations, proposed parking locations, things like that. I don't know if it would necessarily say, we have X amount of soil that can support X amount of development on this property. They would have to do a more detailed soils analysis for that.
Only, all the unknowns that bothers me is that, you know, the creek is a natural barrier between the residential and the industrial or developed, and the only access to this property is, both sides are residential.
And you can see why, I mean, just the discussion we're having, and, you know, my staff report when I wrote it, you know, there are, like with most developments, you're going to see things that would support a rezoning and things that don't. You know, we contacted Smyrna's planning staff when this first came in and discussed, you know, how this would possibly fit into their comprehensive plan, land use policies, and our plans and land use policies, and, you know, generally speaking, you could make the argument that the plans do support that, but I think you could also make the argument that there are elements of those that don't, especially in our plan, when you look at the timing element of things, you know? Just because it may be supported in a plan, if that timing element's not there yet, the infrastructure may not be there to support the use, is it really an appropriate time to zone? I mean, most applications, you know, when I bring them before you, I'm pretty upfront, either yea or nay, I'll either recommend approval or denial. There's a few, though, like this one, that really kind of straddled the fence a little bit, and so, this one's kind of, could go either way, in my opinion.
Well, and Doug, you actually just hit on the point I was going to make, is that I just feel like the application's premature, even though it could conceivably fit in with Smyrna's comprehensive plan, you know, those are usually twenty-year plans, those are long-range plans. I like to have conversations with the applicant when they're the person who's going to be owning it and operating it and incurring the cost of the improvements and that sort of thing. I'm always extremely hesitant of speculative rezoning, and as much as I respect and honor the landowner's intent, especially since they have lived there for as long as they have, I know they're invested in that community, so I appreciate their intent, and I don't want in any way, want to seem like we're not taking that into consideration. I just feel like the request, based on its face and on the lack of information and all the unknowns, it's just a premature request. So, on those grounds, I'm going to make a request that we deny it.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny eighteen dash A zero one five. Allohs in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion to deny carries. This will still be presented before the full county commission on September the thirteenth, better look and make sure that's right, September the thirteenth, six-thirty PM, in this courtroom. Thank you. Item six B two, eighteen dash A zero one six, Mr. John Harney for A and R Land Investments. Location is Beulah Rose Drive, commission district is twenty, county commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately seventy-five acres, approximately two-point-one acres are affected, tax map is ninety-four, existing zoning is a PUD, planned unit development, proposed zoning is PUD amendment, net increase of seven residential lots. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is requesting an amendment to the approved PUD and pattern book in order to provide a net increase of seven residential lots. The applicant's pattern book was uploaded to our SharePoint site as a separate attachment, there's a copy on your iPads, and Mike's got a copy on the screen behind me. The conditions approved as part of the original Nature Walk subdivision, such as minimum lot size, building materials, house sizes, et cetera, are not to be changed. The application does result as a decrease of about two acres of open space, but the site still has more than enough to meet the county's current PUD requirements. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting for this project, which for PUD applications and amendments is required, back in, on July ninth of this year. Some of the issues discussed were questions about the proposed amenity area, traffic improvements to Franklin Road, timing of the development, there were some questions on annexation, and a number of builders constructing homes in the development. The affected area will access Beulah Rose Drive, which is now being constructed to county road standards. Nature Walk and Spring House subdivisions will have access to both Shores Road and Franklin Road, State Road ninety-six. Actually, at our last planning commission meeting, we looked at a couple of Platts for Nature Walk that will make that connection all the way down to Franklin Road, so that will give the connection both to Shores, which is right now the only way in and out, and to Franklin Road, so there'll be multiple ways in and out of this subdivision. This is a residential development, so there's no parking lots or anything like that that we need to worry about, nor are there any buffering requirements or performance standards. In staff's opinion, this is a very straightforward amendment, really, they're just adding seven homes to the request, they're losing one in, by trying to build eight, they're losing one, so it's a net seven. We don't expect any adverse impact from this quest, and we do recommend approval. We'll be happy to answer any questions, the applicant is also present.
Questions for staff before the public hearing?
Doug, I'm looking at the Nature Walk pattern book, and I'm looking at the slide that you've got right there. Do they have additional development that's going to happen north of where that blue hashtag line is, that hash line? The cul-de-sac just stops very abruptly, so I'm just trying to figure out why it stopped so suddenly right there.
Yeah, it's, the rest of it's just open space, there's no development beyond that, open space and adjacent property as well, so, but yeah, there's nothing beyond what they're proposing on this.
So, was there a reason they didn't want to do lots off that cul-de-sac all the way around, or it's just odd shape?
If the applicant was going to, if he's welcome to come up, the applicant's going to speak to that.
Matt Taylor from SEC eight-five-zero, Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Yes, ma'am, when we get into the narrower lots, to run this straight out is more efficient than to try to put it off the end, is what we have figured out, especially with the new requirements with CUD to fit in a driveway, a step tank, and a water meter, and any other utilities without overlapping easements, so it's easier, it's better lot configuration, essentially. Thank you.
While you're still up here, I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing open, so don't leave. Anything else you want to add?
No, sir, I think Mr. Damasi covered it very well. We're not trying to change home size, home quality, home character. What it really boils down to is between Spring House and Nature Walk, as we went through this, we've lost some lots overall from what we originally master-planned out here, and so we just saw an opportunity to get back to our original density plan for the property.
So, Matt, you tapped into some green space to pick up seven extra lots, but in reality, you were giving more green space than you really needed.
Yes, sir, I think we're in the thirty percentile on green space out here, and I wish I could say we were just that generous, but there's a lot of flood problems out here, so.
So, you still meet the, you're still over the amount of green space required?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Since the public hearing is open, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mike, you got anything on as far as that, the drainage goes, or any impact to that, that change on the overall drainage of the area?
Well, if my GIS maps weren't infected with gremlins, I would show you the flood in that area, but I'm having some issues with my map, but that area has substantial flood zones, but it's not due to FEMA, it's localized drainage from sinkholes. And if you remember, Shores Road was impacted pretty heavily by sinkholes, and SEC commissioned a hydrologist to do a flood study of this area, Jamie James, and he established a hundred year flood zone for this area based on local drainage conditions, and what we have done in this, what we will do for this addition, as and as we have done in the past, we have evaluated the cut and fill in this flood zone, so we do not impact any of the neighbors, and the drainage will drain to the common area, there's a lot of area that's been overexcavated and has natural sinkholes, so we look at this closely on the construction plans, and they've done a good job in evaluating, you know, the balance, the cut and fill, so we're comfortable with this addition, and we don't think it'll impact. And the proposed area actually does, if I had my GIS, I could show you that the ground is somewhat elevated in this area anyway, so it won't impact a whole lot with natural surroundings.
That being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eighteen dash A zero one six for Mr. John Harney and for the A and R Land Investments. Other questions or comments? Allohs in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. There any opposition? Motion to approve carries, thank you. Other reports, other business?
Just one, well, a couple items. I sent an email out just a little earlier today regarding the Cumberland Region tomorrow, Power of Ten Summit. I've already heard back from a couple of folks regarding this. If you're interested in attending that, I believe it's September the thirteenth is the date for that, that can go as part of your training, so the county will reimburse the cost for that. Actually, just let me know, and we'll do the sign-up, that way you don't have to pay and get reimbursed, we'll just do it out of the county's, our training lineup that we have. So, just let me know over like the next week or so, if you would like to attend that, and we'll go ahead and get you signed up. As far as training goes, one other thing, we will be having a, another one of our early morning, Monday morning, training sessions at our next planning commission meeting, which will be two weeks from today. We'll meet at seven-thirty in the Planning Mezzanine, and we will be hearing from Steve Maloney with Griggs and Maloney regarding wetlands, and Mike, I don't even know if you, you actually talked with him, what was specifically?
Specifically, their classification and the requirements that the state and the EPA might require of flood zones, I mean, excuse me, wetlands.
So, we hope you're able to come to that, so we'll have that, we'll have some refreshments there as well, so, and coffee, we'll make sure we have that, but that's pretty much all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Doug, you said the summit on, is it the thirteenth?
I believe it's the thirteenth. It's in, I think it starts at nine and ends at two, lunch is provided.
Okay.
So, it's not, yeah, it wouldn't interfere, I know there's county commission that evening, but it wouldn't interfere with that.
Thank you.
Right, you can get out of Nashville with all the traffic.
Doug, I have one question. On the, we talked about on the Baker Road, if they did not occupy that house when, within thirty months, it didn't, it was lost, it couldn't be occupied, is that correct?
Right, if the residential use of the property, the use that would have been grandfathered, if it was discontinued for a period of thirty months or longer, then the grandfathering would be lost.
Okay, is thirty month, is that a magic word that we use? Like, if somebody had a store building and they didn't use it for a store building for thirty months, would they lose that, not be grandfathered in? Is thirty months, or is that just a magic number?
Thirty months is the same, right, thirty months is the same number used in the state law when it comes to non-conforming or grandfathered uses, when it comes to commercial industrial property. The non-conforming laws that are on the state books don't directly address single-family residential, the thirty months that we have in here for that is in our zoning ordinance, but we use thirty to be consistent with the state law for industrial and commercial uses. Now, understand that if they, or if somebody, and not just their property, but just in general, if somebody has a residential piece of property that's grandfathered, say it's owned commercial and doesn't allow for residential uses and they had one, they can still sell the property to somebody else, or they can rent it to somebody else, even if it goes, you know, if they rent the property and then they, nobody occupies the property for, say, a year, you know, a year, twelve months, then somebody moves back in. That's still allowed, because that's outside the thirty months. They can go, you know, twenty-nine months and twenty-nine days, and on that last day, they can get somebody in there, they can still use it. It doesn't have to be the same people that own the property right now, they can sell the property, the use can, as long as the use continues, it's the use that they look at, as long as the use is continuing, but if the use itself is discontinued, nobody lived in there for, say, five years, and the house just sat there, and then somebody came in and said, hey, I want to use this house again, our answer would be, well, no, you can't do that, it's lost its grandfathering status. If you wanted to do that, you would have to rezon the property to residential, or a zone that would allow that use.
Speaking of that, Doug, what would be the potential for them to have it incorporated into the city of Smyrna?
They would have to talk with the town for that. A lot of the times, if they're utilizing the sanitary sewer available by the, either the municipality or the town, like Murfreesboro or Smyrna, they would require annexation. That's, in Smyrna's case, there's a piece of property that we're looking at right now that's going to utilize a sewer, but they're not going to annex that, so generally speaking, that's the case, but as far as actually getting into the town, those would be conversations they'd have to have with town officials.
Seems like that may be an alternative for them. Several people said that, that type of business is going to be more and more needed as we continue and continue to grow, and I'd like to see some of those type of businesses come in, but there also has to be the right spot for it, and I concur with the decision this commission made. Anyone have anything else? Thank you for your time, your attendance, your patience, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.